Good evening and welcome to the township of Woolwich Committee of the Whole Meeting on Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. We are now live on YouTube. I will now do a roll call of council. My councillor Kiddeham present in chairing this meeting. Mayor Chance?
Present.
Councillor Bryant has sent in her regrets due to a family situation. Councillor Burgess?
Present.
Councillor Grant?
Present.
Councillor Schwinn?
Present.
Thank you. We will now proceed to our land acknowledgement. I want to acknowledge that the land on which we live has been here since time immemorial and that indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I think the Chinatown, also called the Anawarun, the Anishinaabe and the Hueda Hoshone people who have lived here and carried for this land and continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna and the land that sustains us. Are there any disclosures of community area interest? Seeing none. We will move on to the next portion of the meeting. This is the public meetings section. Now, this is for information purposes only and no decisions will be made tonight. Any questions can be directed to developmental services staff following the meeting. I now declare the public meeting to be open. So, item 3.1 DS 14 2023 is an information report, the official plan review, and I know that Mr. Vink, manager of planning and Ms. Freeze, director of Delabentos Services is here to walk us through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair member of the council. I'm going to do a very brief introduction and then going to be turning it over. So in front of you tonight, we're kicking off our official plan review. Late last year, council authorized the acquiring the services of NPG planning consultants to start our official plan review to bring us back into conforming with the new ROP changes to take us to 2051. So far, we've been doing some background work and now we're initiating that formal process of going to the community and gaining public input and solicitation for how it changes to the official plan. As part of that, we have to go through a formal special council meeting under the Planning Act to kind of kick this off a little bit. So tonight I'm turning it over to Heather Sewell and Mary Lou Tanner, both from NPG who are in front of you tonight and in the council chambers will go through the report and their presentation on this app on moving forward with the official plan and our process that we're looking forward to take before you in the next, uh, vote the next year. So I turn it over to Mary Lou and Heather.
Thank you, Jeremy. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. Good evening, mayor, councillors, chair, staff and members of the community. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name is Heather Sewell and I am the manager of planning at NPG Planning Solutions, Inc. I am joined today by the principal and partner, Mary Lou Tanner of our firm. We have been retained to prepare the new official plan that will outline development in the township until 2051. Can you see my PowerPoint? Please. Thank you. I'm on slide three. Thank you. Today, we will come cover a number of topics related to your new official plan. My hope is that I can provide you with a background and understanding of what an official plan is. And then secondly, why you need an official plan review at this time. More importantly, we're here today because we really want to hear from council and the community on any ideas or concerns that you have as it relates to your new official plan. Section 26 of the Planning Act, as Jeremy already indicated, states that before any revisions can be made, council must hold a special meeting open to the public to discuss revisions that may be required to the plan. So we are here today to listen to those ideas. Next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. Before we begin hearing from you, I want to stage, uh, set the stage and discuss a little bit more about what uh, the township's official plan is and what its function is. At a high level, the official plan is a document that identifies policies and objectives to guide the physical development of lands within the township. It provides details on how and where the community will grow. And it is ultimately implemented by tools such as the Township Zoning Bylaw, subdivision and site plan control, budgets that are set by council as well as other municipal activities. Next slide, please. Practically speaking, the document is comprised of text and mapping. Uh, these maps classify land designations and categories. They outline road networks as well as constraint mappings such as floodplain and natural heritage areas. Next slide, please. Now that we know a little bit more about what an official plan is, I'd like to discuss why it is the township needs a new official plan and why you're going through an official plan review. There are several legislative and policy documents that guide the policy framework in Ontario, such as the provincial policy statement outlined in the blue, a place to grow, Bill 23 and the new regional official plan of 2051. All these, all of these documents recently changed and as a result of that, your township official plan needs to reflect these changes. Next slide, please. Specifically, many of the changes that relate to the documents that I just mentioned just relate to housing growth demands and pressures as well as employment lands. Your new official plan will reflect the policy changes and directions that have been outlined in these documents. An example of this is protecting lands for employment by not allowing residential uses on employment lands. Next slide. The region of Waterloo also recently conducted an official plan review, which resulted in an update to their official plan known as ROPA number six. The main change that was made to the regional official plan relates to growth management for the region until 2051 and accommodating a growing population needs for more housing and more jobs, which translated into a settlement boundary, which translates into settlement boundary adjustments. They conducted a municipal comprehensive review as part of the process. They also introduced a number of policies related to growth as well as 15-minute communities and climate change. All these changes will need to be reflected in your new township official plan. The Waterloo region plan also has plans for a future ROPA on other matters that were not covered in ROPA number six. When this happens, the township official plan will have to update their, their plan to reflect this as well. Next slide, please. I wanted to demonstrate and show you a slide related to the projected population increase and job increases that are expected to 2051. I'm sure that you've seen these numbers. Um, they were assessed by the region. And this screenshot that I have here is the table from ROPA, um, from the, uh, it's table one from the ROPA number six document. As you can see, the township is expected to grow by 22,500 people from 2021 to 2051. And it's expected to increase by approximately 15,700 jobs in the, in the same time schedule. You can see the highlighted bubbles in red. So this gives you an idea of growth that is expected in the township and the level of growth that will need to be accommodated in your new official plan. Next slide, please. So now that we know what initiated your official plan, I'd like to run through some key concepts and studies that will be undertaken in creating your new official plan. So as mentioned in a previous slide, we'll be looking at population growth and housing and jobs and the settlement area boundary adjustment for the township. The township is also currently undertaking an active transportation and parks and recreation master plan, which will also inform future policies in, in the new official plan. The new official plan will view all future development and policy through a climate change lens, which is a direction that is given from the Waterloo region, uh, ROPA number six. And a number of background studies are being completed, um, such as an intensification study, 15-minute community study related to commercial uses and institutional strategy. Lastly, your new official plan will be based on a newly established vision, goals and objectives, and we have a number of focus groups and stakeholder meetings that are coming up in the month of April. And I'll talk about that shortly in a later slide. Next slide, please. Thanks. So in summary, there are a number of changes, as you can see, that are coming to the new official plan and that are going to be proposed in your new official plan. What I would like to draw your attention to as council is that in all of the different ways that your official plan is going to change, there are some changes that you will have choice or discretion over. Others aren't, there will not be any discretion. They will be mandatory. Similarly, you'll be able to mandate certain policies through the same language for future policies that you would like to have in your new official plan. So key words that I would have you look, look out for are listed on the PowerPoint, shall, will, should, may, encourage. Look out for these when you're trying to determine which are mandatory and which are discretionary and which might be enabling or recommended. An example to demonstrate this is in the new official plan, it may say, you shall provide a range of housing. In that instance, it is, it is mandatory. Another example, though, would be you may allow a surplus farm dwelling. In that instance, it may be discretionary. Just some tips to look out for. So now that we know what your official plan does and why it is changing, I'd like to discuss how the official plan process is going to unfold over the next year, as Jeremy had mentioned. And more importantly, how you can get involved. So the project kickoff took place in January of 2023 and we've been working with township staff to collaboratively to organize this meeting as well as to create content for the engaged WR website. We're also in the process of completing an environmental scan, which will set the foundation for the project. Next steps will be a visioning exercise, which I mentioned is going to be upcoming in April next month, as well as the three background studies that I had mentioned in earlier slides. Uh, you can expect a draft of the official plan towards the end of the year in Q4 of 2023, where we will be looking for, um, for feedback. And there will be consultation and then we are looking to adopt the plan in, in Q1, Q2, 2024. Next slide, please. So now for the big question, how can you get involved? And more importantly, how can we hear what you have to say and your ideas around your new official plan? So we will be doing regular updates with council throughout the process over the course of the life of the project. But there will also be opportunity for the community to get involved in the following, uh, in the following way. So I have an infographic posted to demonstrate different ways, such as the focus groups. We've created a project email inbox. It's called woolwich@npgplanning.ca. We have the content on the municipality website that we're creating in conjunction with Jeremy. We have an interactive online survey that will be upcoming. We are having in-person meetings or available for them as well as we're going to tap into the municipalities Twitter and Facebook accounts through social media. There is also the availability of, you know, written letters as well as telephone calls are also available. Next slide, please. So we have two very important focus groups coming up on April 20th. The focus will be establishing a community vision and goals and objectives for the new official plan. Everyone is welcome. And we would really like to have a great turnout to this so we can meet the community and we can hear from you and what you want to see in your community until 2051. It's a very important part of the process. I can't stress that enough. It's really going to set the stage and the foundation for your new official plan. And for all of those attending in person today and online, I welcome you to please let your friends know, let your family know and let your colleagues know about these dates that are coming up because we would really love to see you out there. So you can register in advance through me or through Jeremy Vink at the township, uh, or it's, it's not necessary. You can also just show up. It will be here at the Township of Woolwich Administrative Offices. We have two times scheduled, so from 10 until 12 to make it more convenient or 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. So thank you so much for your time. Uh, and more importantly, for trusting us with your new official plan. Uh, we're really looking forward to collaborating with you and council and the community and township staff on this project moving forward. Mary Lou and I are available to answer any questions you may have. But more importantly, we're really here to hear what your ideas are and if there's any areas of focus that you would like for us to know as we begin this, this, this process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sewell, and I'll open it up to council if there's any questions that you may have either for staff or for Mrs. Sewell. Councillor Grant?
Hi, thank you. Through you, uh, chair to the, uh, to Mrs. Sewell, I just was wondering if you could expand a little bit on what a climate change lens will look like for the plan and like how that will be implemented throughout the plan.
Yes, through you, chair. We, there is a number of initiatives or policies, I should say, that are outlined in the new ROPA six. So we will be implementing those changes that have been outlined into the township, the new township official plan. So it'll be items that are related to sustainability. So an example of that would be the 15-minute communities. That's probably the biggest example. So the region of Waterloo has created a lot of policies around the 15-minute communities. So essentially people are able to live and walk and work within a 15-minute radius of where they're living. And so those policies would be implemented into the new township official plan.
Okay, thank you. I just, um, I just wanted to, uh, maybe bring out a point that has been discussed with the Woolwich environment and the Environment Advisory Committee, which was that when we discussed the, uh, the official plan that they would really like to see green initiatives embedded throughout the entire process as opposed to like a solitary chapter that may be listing those things. So, um, that's the one thing that I know that they've been talking about is that need to really embed it in every facet of the plan.
Mr. Vink, I saw that you turned your camera on there.
Definitely just adding to the comments from Heather and the response to councillor Grant through you, Mr. Chair. So definitely rather than a chapter, that's why the, the concept is to look at the policies through the lens. So every chapter has that lens to look at it rather than one solitary chapter or section hidden. So everything, when you're looking at all the policies that are taking place is the question of how does that play into that climate change issues and how are we looking at things from a sustainability perspective? So every single chapter will have that kind of context running through it. And that's what definitely what you're, I think you're looking for and what the community people are starting to look for is how does it flow through and not hidden on the side or just one element of the plan? It is embedded within everything in the plan. And that way it's a more wholesome approach across the township and within the policies themselves.
Thank you. That's excellent.
And if I may add through you chair, um, an example with of this, I'm just brainstorming. But what we've seen in other plans is that throughout the entire document, there may be the use of a, like an icon of some sort to identify that that policy is related to climate change. So that's one of the ways that we could identify that in your, in your new official plan. That's an idea. So maybe like a little leaf, like a visual aid to say, you know, this policy here is related to climate change. Yeah. So that's an idea. But, but there are many ideas, right? Like we can brainstorm many ideas of how we can do this. Yeah.
Mayor Chance?
Thank you. My question was along the same line. Um, so where's the line between what we can and cannot, um, ask for? So for example, people have asked if we can impose restrictions on the kind of heating systems that, that maybe are used in the development. Is there a line as to what we can and can't ask for?
Um, I think that there is a, through you chair, I think that there is a line. However, it's also how it's framed in the policy. So in that situation, when I think of, you know, housing practices, I do believe that there is a role for it in, in the, in housing policy throughout the official plan. Maybe somewhere along the lines of net zero housing or housing, um, housing, housing construction practices. It's something that we can take a look at through a best practices review. I know that a lot of other municipalities are also taking a look at things like heat pumps that are becoming very popular energy savers, um, that are also climate change friendly and sustainable. So yeah, we can definitely take a look, but it, it would have to be through that lens of, um, of, of, through policy. So I would, I would see it as being through housing policy. See in that situation, we would have to see.
Follow up.
Totally different question, and I'm not sure, um, if it's for Mr. Brenneman or, um, for, um, Heather, Heather, thank you. I was trying to get your last name. How, how does this process connect in with our planning and our strat plan? Because they're, they're different, but yet it's still sort of, how do we see the, the community growing?
Mr. Brenneman?
Yeah, there certainly is the potential for having overlap because the official plan document obviously zeros in on how we're going to grow, how we're going to develop. I think the best way to answer is that in the current strategic plan, one of the primary areas of focus that came out was with respect to, um, the importance of managing growth in a sustainable, phased, staged way. And so, you know, I think, um, you know, I think the official plan work will be another environmental background context piece that will help feed into, you know, how, if any way, do we want to make sure growth has a primary focus within the overall strategic plan? I think that's the best way I can set the context.
If I could just follow up on that, I, I wonder if we need to look at, uh, our, our timing on, on some of those things too, and how it fits in that way. If we're going to have community consultations for the strat plan, so that we're not confusing people or overloading them with meetings. Maybe we can combine them if that's not too confusing.
Any other dialogue, uh, councillor Schwinn?
Couple of questions, if I may. Um, first one goes back to the, I guess, the regional official plan. I understand the old process, provincial policies. Provincial policy statement and the regional official plan, township official plan, if the region no longer has planning authority, I guess to me there's a disconnect as to why there is still an original official plan or why we're, I guess, utilizing it in our planning process. So I guess I'm looking for help to understand that disconnect or is it an evolving piece?
I think Mr. Vink is chomping at the bit to answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not necessarily chomping at the bit, but, um, it is a good question. It is a, is an element that is in transition. We are waiting for clarification from the province as to when that transition will take place. So at the moment, we are still subject to the regional official plan and we still have to follow the regional official plan. It went and if the province changes and downloads that planning approval authority to the local municipalities and takes that away from the region. The way the legislation is currently proposed, the regional official plan also becomes the township's official plan. So for a period of time, we'll actually have two official plans, the regional one and our own current plan until we rescind and appeal the regional plan and replace it with potentially this new plan to take place. So we will still have for a period of time, two official plans from one sort of a regional level and one from the township level until something changes from the province. And like I said, if, if, when that change happens, we will have to merge the region's plan into ours to become one and eliminate that regional plan in the future.
But follow up, that kind of makes sense. Would it not be appropriate then for this, I guess, town to official plan review, uh, incorporate the regional official plan in our new plan so that it's a seamless transition and six months or a year, whatever the case may be.
Uh, through the chair to councillor Schwinn, definitely. And that is part of what we're looking at. So when we initiated this, as things were transitioning, unfortunately, we awarded the RFP and then the province came up with Bill 23 and the changes. But we are working to mesh the two plans together as seamlessly as we can at this point, anticipating that we will be merging the ROP into our plan. So the goal is to merge it all together as best we can. So we can seamlessly integrate them and have one plan in the future if need be.
I can keep going. I'm not sure. This is quite a follow-up, but I'm wondering how the township was consulted in the provincial policy statements and the regional official plan. The example I'm going to use is population goals. I saw the number, like 51,000 people is a target for Woolwich. Is that carved in the stone and what influences township have to raise that number or lower that number based on our community needs?
For the chair to councillor Schwinn, I'll take that one again. So the, the number is written in stone in the regional official plan. And that's based on the region when they went through their land budgeting process and their land needs assessment that's required. So the province says each region had to do a municipal comprehensive review to, with that analysis to deal with the growth pressures that are anticipated. So the province hands down a big number to the region and says, you're going to grow to this number as a region. You now assess how that growth is going to be divided up amongst your municipalities. And the region did that in ROPA six. So that was all the background at work. There's many reports and pages of documentation done to determine how they calculated those numbers and then gave us that allocation for Woolwich. So that is written in stone at this point. Uh, until the province change, like at, at the moment, it's in ROPA six. The province is still waiting to, we're waiting for the province to approve ROPA six. So the province may change the boundaries that are proposed to meet that growth. And if they change those boundaries and give us additional lands, which we could then have more land than we need for the population proposed. So, uh, if the province approves that, that's what will happen. If the province approves ROPA six, we will have enough land in the township to take us to 2051 as per their, now their budget and numbers. So it's, it's basically set in stone for us for this point, for there's nothing staff can, in the township can do to change the 51,000 really.
Following up on that one, then, when ROPA six disappears and our township plan takes over, can we add salt to stone number and pencil on our own at that point?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Schwinn. As noted, ROPA six, um, with once approved by the province and whatever state it gets approved, becomes the regional official plan, which becomes our plan for a time period that we have to work with. To amend that, those numbers, we'd have to see some changes probably from the province or some direction to us to amend those numbers. Often done through some sort of five, 10-year review as necessary. So we'd be getting information from the province probably to change numbers as necessary. Kind of like the region in the initially, in this case, was given the big picture number for the region. The province in the future will probably give us a number for growth or work with, and we'd have to work with the other municipalities in the region to alter growth numbers. It is a question because we don't know how that's going to work given Bill 23. There is no clarity as to how that's going to happen in the future exactly. But there is likelihood we will have to sit with the other municipalities in the region and kind of divvy up population growth in the future amongst each other without the region at the table to some extent is a possibility even. po- population growth in the future amongst each other without the region at the table to some extent is a possibility even. So it's good to be a little challenging. It's not going to be just up to us. We will probably still be working with some other municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Vink. Promise? No, just get.
Um just wondering how individual property owners um should be interacting in this official plan review. Um I guess I understand on a global scale settlement boundaries, that type of thing, but definitely individual property owners may have concerns on a localized scale. When or where is the appropriate time for them to, I guess, provide input and look for, I guess, changes in their situations?
Um through the chair, I I would say anytime now they can start submitting their comments and thoughts on the big picture policies. So we're opening this stuff, we're opening up the process. They can join the focus groups that were proposed. We'd like to see them come out and join these focus groups to give their input, chat with their community, give their, you know, listen to other people's comments. Uh pull together any comments they have. Ultimately, we're not talking uh changes to the larger settlements, but there might be some minor boundary adjustments that we have to finalize in for the smaller settlements uh that are, they need to still needs to be take place. And then just talking about policies in general, about changes, whether it's the environmental, whether it's a question about uh transportation, whether it's questions and issues or concerns around how growth will take place for intensification in our communities. We want taller buildings. How do we want those buildings to look? Where do we want them? Uh how do we want to protect our environment? Are our policies good enough? Or do we need any tweaks or changes? How do we want our rural community to grow and be protected? So people should be coming out and voicing their concerns now as to what they think or what they're what they want to see take place. So we can incorporate those or respond to them accordingly as we move through this process. So written comments uh at any point, we're going to be to the various engagements. Uh let's, you know, attending the focus groups as they come up in the next month. Uh looking at the draft official plan when it comes out later this year, early next year to give their comments, read through it. So anything right now is to come forward and start giving us their comments right now.
Thank you, Mr. Vink, and I will echo. This is a wonderful opportunity to have your voice heard. Um you know, to that point, I'm wondering. Um it's the Planning Act that dictates this type of a thing. Does it stipulate how often an official plan needs to be updated?
Yes, the Planning Act does, uh Mr. Chair. So it does require us that we are to update it regularly. Um and then every few five years, we should be doing a review. So a minor review in some cases, but uh definitely we're doing constant reviews uh every five and then larger reviews as necessary in this point to match up with the regional official plan to take us to twenty fifty-one. This is more of a major review at this point. Um but yes, dictated by the Planning Act.
Any further questions, comments? Uh CEO Brenneman.
Just one more thing, um based on the exchange that Jeremy had with Counselor Schwint uh that I think it's important that the new council understand, and that is we are definitely going through uh interesting new times in the sense that as a two-tier system, not to have a regional official plan, um save and accept for as Jeremy described it. You know, becomes the township official plan. We're going to have to really strategically feel our way through this as a region. And why I say that is because um if you don't have an overarching plan in terms of how the region as a whole is going to grow, that helps guide the cities in the four townships, the difficulty is, you know, the region still is going to be responsible for the water treatment plants and the sewage treatment plants. So that deals with the capacity issues. The cities and the townships deal with the distribution of the sewage in the water. And so, as you can appreciate, um and and probably have learned early in your term, we have situations like in the Stockyards area where we have cross-border servicing agreement with the city of Waterloo. And we have a cross-border servicing agreement with the city of Kitchener um for Breslau. In order to be able to fully inform that we have the capacity for growth, we're going to have to understand how Kitchener and Waterloo are also going to grow and hopefully be able to reach some agreement on that. To be able to make sure we have su- suitable cast capacity, not just within the plant at a regional level, but within the distribution system as well. So i- it's really going to be unusual times. Um that, as I said, we're going to be have to very carefully and strategically with feel our way through what this new age uh looks like without having a regional official plan per se. So just something I think for council to be aware of because of how capacity, servicing and distribution plays so heavily in how we develop and our ability to develop.
Thank you, Mr. Brenneman. Um I will now ask Mr. Clerk if there are any unregistered participants in the meeting.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. There are no unregistered uh speakers tonight. Um but since there are, since there is a fairly large public gallery, I think it would be appropriate to uh just make sure there isn't anyone uh here to speak uh tonight from the gallery.
Is there any one from the gallery who's wishing to speak, ask questions, make commentary on this item? Seeing none. Since this item was for information purposes only and there are no further speakers, I declare the planning public meeting to be closed. We will now move to the next portion of the meeting. Thank you to Mrs. Seewell. Thank you for standing for as long as you did as well. Um so we do have two presentations tonight. Uh the first is from the Almyra BIA area uh to present on their budget. Uh so I will call on John Clay and John Cenares. Thank you.
There, I bought it to watch Netflix on during COVID and I didn't know it was going to be used for important things. Um through you, Chair. Um thank you for having me here tonight to council members, uh staff, guests. Uh I always enjoy coming and speaking to all of you. Um and this time in person. So we'll go to the next slide. Am I just directing? Yes, perfect. Um little bit of a presentation agenda. We'll try and get through it as quickly as possible. Uh I am lovely at repurposing slides that my admin assistant has put together uh from our AGM and from council presentation a little while ago. So we'll get through this as quickly as possible and get to the budget. Um the BIA for downtown Almyra uh had another big year. Uh the basic stuff, flowers, banners, uh some new ones that you saw go up, I think, just this morning. Um and we can go to next slide as well too on the um uh we're put up just this morning and are looking great. Unfortunately, there was a casualty of one of the lights uh I think that I just found out about. So we'll have to, Jared knows about it. So we're going to deal with that in in due time. Um next slide. Uh one of the bigger projects that we had this year was the Greenery Project. Uh we had some uh funding for that through a grant. And we were able to uh secure ten concrete planters uh that we filled with some lovely flowers. As I've spoke to this council before about uh we are trying to do our best as a board to make the downtown a little greener, et cetera. And uh we're doing our best and we'll speak to that uh in a little bit. Uh next slide. Seasonal decor for us uh was another big project. There was a grant of twenty-eight thousand dollars that we put mostly towards our uh new lighting uh on the street posts. Uh there even are a few left to go up. We're just debating on what we're going to do for the rest of the season. But a lot of the money goes towards uh the garland as well uh that we put up every year. Uh and uh Mill Street Community Seeing Area, uh it's been an ongoing thing for how long now, John?
Three years.
Three years. And uh we've enjoyed trying to make it as beautiful as we can. Uh we're always trying to get the word out to uh have as many people as possible use that area in conjunction with Sip and Bite and their patio area. And 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 I'll go back to John. John, there might be some visitors from the uh new Arthur Street Grill. I'm just putting a little plug in there for a second. Johnson Taurus is going to be co-chairing uh with me this year. I'm slowly passing the torch off um from the board. Um and John uh, John's looking for kitchen help in case anyone, Nathan, no, okay, I just thought I'd ask. Okay, um coming soon to Arthur Street near you. All right. The bench rehab project, if we can go to the next slide, uh was was a personal favorite of mine. The the benches were in severe need of of repair. And EDSS uh in conjunction with some financial support from home hardware, uh we were able to um drop these benches off at the school. And they use as as part of their uh woodworking project to refinish them all, paint them all in uh sort of our our BIA colors, downtown colors, if you will. Um and we found it to be a very successful project to restore those benches in the downtown community and have everything looking a little bit nicer. Um for the events for us for next year or for this year, if we can go to the next slide, uh we've decided to do away with the sidewalk sale. We just, the interest level of it every year was was waning and the business participation in it was waning. And we decided for the amount of time that we had to put in it to make in a successful event, we decided to put our effort into Moonlight Madness, which continues to be our flagship event of the year. Uh this year, the band, The Ice Carver, what was his name?
Chef Philippe.
Chef Philippe was uh outstanding out in front of the library, the fire barrels, as usual, tree lighting, uh uh the Roaming Santa. So we'll continue to have that. Uh again, it was a great night uh and there were a lot of families that were out um this year. One of the things that was a s- uh successful venture for us as well, we had three businesses particip- participate in our community improvement plan. Um and we'll go to the next slide. Uh I don't know how many of you are familiar with ChatGPT. But I decided rather than pull something from our own CIP definition, I would go to ChatGPT and see what they come up with, and I thought it was pretty good. I bolded some things here because I think it's important that that council staff, uh the gal, all of us here tonight really understand what the CIP is about. Um it's a strategic planning document. Uh we took on this endeavor, spent a lot of money on this as a BIA, and to this point, I still don't know of a BIA that has taken on a project like this. Um to be a vessel by which we could redirect funds back into the community uh that we have in our own budget and hopefully within uh the township budget as well too. And I'll I'll say thank you now and probably thank you again for the funds that have already been allowed for the project for this year. Um but essentially, it's an incentive program. We wanted to give money to the businesses as an incentive for them to make their business a better place, make the downtown of Almyra a better place, right? Um enhance livability, sustainability, as ChatGPT might have said. Um are some of the things that we're trying to um uh use or 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 develop with this community improvement plan. And we want to continue using it and and unfortunately uh for 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 you guys, we'll probably be back in front asking for for more funds for this for this tool, because we do find it to be um uh a valuable thing that we can uh use for the downtown of Almyra. If we can go to the next slide. Those are some of the positive results that we had with the improvements. And we're looking forward to doing that a little bit more next uh uh this year, and I will get into that in just a second. So if we can scroll right down to past the twenty twenty-three and into the Community Improvement Plan streams. As I had mentioned to when I was presenting to council before, we have our facade improvement stream and the accessibility grant. Uh and the council approval was for for the four thousand dollars for accessibility. And and I know there was some discussion about the fact that the businesses should be responsible for their own storefronts, et cetera, when when this was being discussed by council. And I I just want to make it clear that 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 this initiative was there to provide an incentive for the businesses to do that because there wasn't a lot happening. And we do believe that his has provided a kickstart for all sorts of different things. And maybe even we we'd like to think that the uh the urban um design study was was part of that and and that now these two documents can work together to continue to enhance the the downtown. Next slide, this just goes into more detail about the facade improvement uh stream and what's that about? And then we have this year for the first time an accessibility stream where we will provide funding uh in conjunction with the business's own funding to provide better accessibility for their customers, patrons, et cetera. One of the other big things we're looking for this year is seasonal decor. Uh we can go to the next slide. So we have provided some of our budget on on that. Again, there's a large amount that goes to the garland install and takedown. Uh we have the snowflakes to put up again, and we're looking for another lighting venture as well, just to brighten up the downtown for that season. The art project uh was new a couple of years ago, but we are looking to enhance that, potentially painting the concrete banners, possibly another mural, uh things like that, and we would like to devote some funds to that. Uh the greening project, if we can just go through the next couple of slides. This is where we were so grateful for for council for providing some funds for us to add to uh what the BIA will be putting in to come to our budget of, we think approximately twenty-six thousand dollars to fill those concrete planters, provide the hanging baskets, uh Mill Street beautification, et cetera. Those are sort of the big things for twenty twenty-three uh and and we're looking forward to uh to having another big year. So I'll just finish up by going quickly through the budget. Um I've sort of pieced this into three sections, uh and I don't know if we can, uh we might wait, if we can move. Uh yeah, just so we can see that. That's great. Um this is our ba- our income basically from the levy and the levy that we receive from Walmart every year. We have township support, which again, thank you very much for agreeing to that. It's going to be put to good use. Uh the transfer from surplus just comes from money that we've had left over over time. Um the twenty-six hundred is again the uh township's contribution, staff's contribution to how we take care of the weeds. And then the next slide. Some of the bigger ticket items here um are, obviously, as you can see, our hanging baskets, uh seasonal de- uh decor, uh the um the facade improvement program and accessibility program and the art project. And final slide there. The last, the the rest is really just admin and membership. Um and like I said, we're going to need to transfer over, if we can go back to slide twenty-one, close to twenty thousand dollars from our surplus. It's not sustainable for the things that we're trying to do. We're going to try and procure uh funding, and my own personal thank you goes to Jenna Morris. Because she often helps us with securing some of those grants. Um and that's it. Thank you. Questions or comments uh from anyone would be uh appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clay. And uh just to to answer your first question, I guess we'll have to see if I get invited back to a pancake flipping contest that I hear is happening this Saturday um to see if I can be good in the kitchen. I I'm probably not though, so I apologize in advance. Um on a serious note, though, we will open it up. Are there any questions or comments uh for Mr. Clay? I suppose a question that comes to mind for me is um the recognition that you are going to be pulling from surplus and the recognition that that isn't sustainable. I mean, what are the plans moving forward to prevent you from having to draw from that surplus in the future?
We're consistently looking for grant money from uh from the region. Uh that was the only way that we could have done some of the things that we did this year. Uh and I and I think the 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 plan of the CIP in small form was to be what we're doing with it now, with our own budget and our own funding. We really developed it for a long-term tool to be able to come to council and say, these are worthwhile projects. This is a tool with which can guide those projects. Can the township, can council agree on funding towards those things to provide that economic development within the downtown? Um and I and and uh I think our asks have gotten a little bit bigger over time. And I would just say that we probably won't stop there, but we feel that the CIP is a is a good tool by which there is, it it's a document supported by council originally to um provide this funding back to the businesses and people of downtown.
Thank you. Mayor Shans.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, John, for the presentation. Um just just a question on the funding and the level of uh of the levy that the businesses and the BIA are willing to also support because there's there's quite a difference between the two BIAs and and where the businesses see that. Um can you speak to that a little bit?
Uh thank you, Mayor Through You Chair. I I think um we've talked about this most recently. There may come a we've talked about this most recently. There may come a time in the near future that we need to go back to businesses for a levy increase. We still feel it's relatively fresh in their minds that we asked for a an increase uh recently. Just coming out of COVID uh and the financial responsibilities that they have. Uh, it's tough to be able to do that. We recognize that that may be an option for us down the road. Uh, but currently, we don't feel that as an option, at least certainly not this year and probably not next year either, until more of the businesses are back on their feet and ready to go.
Thank you.
For the questions, comments? There is a recommendation to pass a resolution to, or pass this budget. Can I get a mover? Council Schwent, seconded by Council Grant. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Clay. You may take your seat. If you so wish, you may leave, or you can stay for the duration. Very good. Uh, that does bring us to the next presentation, the Saint Jacobs Business Improvement Area Budget as well. We have uh Graham Spence here, and hopefully I got your name right, Mr. Spence.
Yeah, that's good. Um, yeah, I think I got a slide there, slide deck as well. Awesome. All right, so I'm just gonna do a quick uh kind of recap. I should like to also someone else on the call from the B I A. Uh, we just recently elected a new um president, so Nick Benager from the Fat Sparrow Group uh has been uh elected the president of the Saint Jacobs B I A, so he is also on this call. Um, yeah, go to the next slide here. So actually, we had a uh really good year in terms of uh accomplishing quite a bit. Uh, we recently brought on a new uh uh coordinator. And she was uh very successful in uh getting uh a lot of grants this year. Uh, and so first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the township and the township staff uh who helped support us uh with some of these uh or most of these projects. So the first one uh is the Heath Valley Trail uh Pavilion uh, which was funded uh by R T O four and completed in December uh twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's a little photo of it down there at the bottom of the slide. Uh, we also uh got a grant uh through the Ontario Reconnect Grant for our holiday lights, uh so like permanent light fixtures uh attached to the buildings uh around town in the downtown core. Uh, next slide. Uh, we finally completed the Queensway Garden Community Space um, which is the picture right there. You can see uh mirror sh- mirror shots there cutting the ribbon. Uh, this one was also done in the collaboration with the Township of Woolwich. Uh, next slide. Um, we also started a um member grant program this year, so we've allocated some of our funding to um fund uh grants put on by members uh rather than B I A initiated um events, and we've had really uh really good success with that. So the grants range from two hundred fifty dollars to a thousand dollars, and um it's probably been one of the most successful things that we've uh we've done with uh in the last couple of years. And then the last thing would be the um, and it's ju- it's just probably being completed in the next couple of days, but the ice rink and shed, it's a federal grant um where we're purchasing a temporary ice rink to be put on the township uh parking lot at the back near the fire hall uh with a big outdoor shed to store and, yeah, uh we'll go to the next slide. And the next one. Um, yeah, so here's a little recap of the twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, we got our levy, we had a surplus. Uh, large surplus in twenty twenty-one, that's mostly related to the um Queensway Garden Project. Uh, we have a associate member membership program, so we have class of fees from that, as well as a small merchandise program. Uh, we we did get a grant for bike racks to be put out through throughout town, and as part of that, we um did so, did a a program where we split the cost fifty fifty with businesses that were interested in putting them up. Um, we started a sponsorship program to help sponsor uh our large uh sparkles uh of event. Um, and then the uh two uh contributions from the township for uh garbage collection and washroom maintenance. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this is ju- just a little comparison here of our plan allocation that I came to last year and our actual spend. Uh, you can see we're pretty close. Uh, we have a little bit of a surplus. And that just happened based on some of the the grants that we were, we received. We had budgeted for spending money on bike racks and instead received a grant for it. Um, and um, few other little odds and ends in there as well. Uh, next slide. So this is the proposal that we went to the, for the, for twenty twenty-three that we went to uh the A G M with, that was approved um a couple of weeks ago. Uh, budget is fairly similar to last year's spend and um we're hoping that we will continue to get the garbage, garbage and washroom allowance through the township. Uh, next slide, I think that's it. So any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Spence. Is there any comments or questions? Mayor Shans?
Just to get um confirmation that those amounts were included in the budget.
Sorry, which amounts are those? Um, the the garbage collection and the?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they were, but I just uh.
Mr. Spence, did I get confirmation from you?
Yes, they were included on the budget there. It's the last slide.
Right. So maybe to Richard.
And I see Richard has uh graced us with his presence here.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So uh I believe for sure the uh six thousand for the garbage hasn't been included, but I don't recall seeing the ten thousand for the washroom allowance uh in this year's budget. It's something I think staff will have to take back and uh take a look at, but I don't recall seeing that uh in in our twenty twenty-three budget.
Getting a confirmation now from C A O Brenneman as well. Um, so I suppose, do we bring this back to staff to confirm that? Okay, so we don't have to move anything. Okay, uh, so are there any other questions, Counselor Schwent?
Another question is to come. I want to pass along appreciation for the rink projects with B I took on. That's a huge community benefit and project that I see a B I A taking on that I think is above and beyond, so congratulations and thank you for taking that.
Yeah, thank, thanks, sir. I mean, I I think, like I said, we've got to really pass that on to you guys, and I was here a couple of weeks ago uh asking for your your help to to support that project, and the township jumped at that, so I I mean uh, I think it's a, it's a great initiative and a great community building project.
Are there questions, commentary? Mr. Clerk, are there any unregistered participants for this one? Did I have to ask you that? No? Okay, well, I did anyways. Um, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to the end of the public meeting session.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Um, if uh if it's council's will, um, just a motion to approve uh the budget as presented by the uh Saint Jacobs B I A. Now, oh, sorry, I see. Yes, we're gonna bring bringing the information back and uh look for um the uh the questions from the budget that we had.
Right.
Okay, so we'll bring that back for a future meeting. My apologies.
Could that come to council next week?
Yeah, so. Excellent. That'll be on the docket for the next council meeting. Um, anything further before we move on? Very good. So before we hear from the delegates this evening, um, oh, sorry, no, I I suppose I should uh um start by saying what we're delegating around. So um number five point one D S seventeen twenty twenty-three, the official plan amendment two dash twenty twenty-two and zone uh zone change five dash twenty twenty-two thirty-nine A Holdings Limited. Uh, Mr. Vink, I know that you're on to walk us through this uh updated report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Um, just gonna share my screen with you, so I'm just gonna move through this PowerPoint a little bit and walk you through O P A twenty twenty-two and zone change twenty twenty-two. As you recall, council, a few weeks ago, we presented the report to you and council uh deferred pending some additional questions around traffic and trees. And staff is just gonna kind of work through that as well as present some additional information. Um, just going to try to get my screen to work with me. Okay. Uh, so this is the site, the current location, current uh development. So we have here in front of you the main part of the property here at twenty thirty-nine Arthur Street. Uh, you have the Canica Jake Creek coming across the bottom into Bullunder Park. You have the Kissing Bridge Trail Trail across the top. High and George Street area off to the one east side, and then Riverside Drive and Arthur Street off more to the west. The main site itself, we have the first portion that's mostly uh gravelled already, and it's zoned M one, which is industrial uh with site-specific and a floodplain provisions, because the majority of this portion of of the site is within the floodplain. So that's, this area already has zoning in place. It has development approvals in place. It can come in and do anything under the M one zone essentially. The back part of the property, which is the main focus of the of the application, is to amend that area, which is designated and zoned open space and to utilize some of that area for the proposed trailer parking. Right now, that is kind of essentially been left. Um, right now, the site has a fencing all the way around the the gra- the gravelled area, but the rear portion has basically been left to just grow wild. Um, had not really been maintained whatsoever for quite some period of time. So what does the M one zoning permit? So just to understand that front portion of the property in the M one zone today could have any of these uses. So it's manufacturing, assembly repair, and wholesale outlet uh indoor storage and warehousing, catering, service, repair enterprise, automobile service station, contractors, building supplies, and industrial mall. And in addition, that site-specific zoning, which is in place, allows the dismantling, storage, and salvage of motor vehicles. So that's a site-specific on that property, and that property only recognizes that historical use that was on the property. So all of those uses can take place in this front portion. So we borrowed the slide from the applicant from last uh meeting here. So as noted, you know, they got the existing building, they're utilizing the front portion today uh for different uses. They could, in terms of a um truck proportion, a truck portion, truck along the traffic side, they could use that front part for any of those indus- permitted industrial uses, which could be more truck traffic than currently utilizing the site today. So there's number of those uses, as you saw, could have a lot more truck traffic to the site under the current zoning and that existing footprint on the front of the property and be utilizing trucks going up and down Arthur Street and Church, et cetera, under the current scenario. The main portion, as we noted, that we're talking about is this back portion, kind of in the yellow outline here, where they're adding that expansion for trailer parking. So the O P A official plan amendment and the zoning is to expand into this back areas, and the yellow is noted, and to give them only a gravel parking lot for trailer parking. So that's the only thing that can happen in the back part of the site. So we're not talking the front part of the site so much on the traffic, because that's a lot could be happening there. We're talking the back part of the site. What is it adding in terms of traffic? It's pretty minimal. The applicants can uh did provide some additional information to us. There's fifty-three trailer parking spaces in this rear. Um, you know, that worked out from their perspective to like half a truck movement an hour, which means throughout the day, they were looking at maybe four truck movements max uh potentially, just from this rear sub- portion of the site, which is fairly minimal and almost no one's gonna notice. Um, but maybe some better in traffic information, too, just to expand on that, as they did look at some other sites to give context and other areas of the province that are similar with truck turning, uh truck movements and trailer parking. And they realize some of them actually have less truck traffic to the site than was proposed in this case. So running to maybe two and a half trucks an hour, uh two and a half trucks throughout uh much of the day type thing. So they've actually over allocated the potential amount of truck traffic at the moment. Um, and kind of being conservative with that, in that, in that sense of saying, you know, they're not hiding any, proposing to hide anything, they're being conservative and saying roughly how many trucks there might be. Uh, that there's maybe more truck movement than actually will probably take place in the end of the day. So just some things to realize, the front part of the site today could just have a lot of trucks coming and going with or without the zone change. If the zone change doesn't go through, they still maintain that flexibility across the front of the property. And if the zone change doesn't go through, they maintain the flexibility for the salvage yard. One of the other elements of the zone changes, they're agreeing to remove that site-specific zoning that would permit the salvage yard across the front of the property. So uh, one of the things we're gonna see is the removal of a use that has caused a lot of traffic in the past. Um, but also a use that is not, that we wouldn't encourage anywhere in the township at this point, just because of the nature of the use and the potential contamination, and it's just not a a use we like to encourage. So this opportunity gets us eliminate that use with it on this property, and it's about one of the only properties in the township that allows an automotive salvage yard. So it would allow that flexibility to be removed. Um, one of the other elements we, council wanted to be discussed again a little bit more was the tree planting. Um, as mentioned, they're gonna be doing a one-to-one replacer, replacement for the trees that will be removed. So the back part of the site is what we're talking about here, where the trees have been going on their own. There's no site plan to protect them at this point in time. They've just been growing naturally on their own. Um, the type of trees that are there, the applicant has reviewed them and given a full listing of those types of trees and then what species they are, et cetera. The majority of the trees that are being removed, the vast majority, are non-native invasive trees and and poor health and poor condition. Or so essentially, they're not in good shape. Um, we're not seeing qua- those aren't quality trees that we're seeing that that are gonna be removed for the most part. What we are going to get on the replacement side is native species. So native species that should do well, grow better, and more appropriate to the site. Also, they wouldn't be on top of the landfill anymore. They'd be around the perimeter of the site. So you can see on here on the drawing, the kind of the green dots all over the place, especially around the perimeter. Those are the new trees and the areas that we'll be seeing the tree planting taking place around the perimeter of the the rear of the site especially, and then towards the Canica Jake Creek. So it'll be enhancing the exterior to kind of block the trailers and some future view from the park, as well as High Street and George Street area. Um, as noted, what, you know, those types of trees are gonna be natives that they're gonna be replacing them with. Um, a lot of them will be lar- the typical tree, street tree size, but there will be some smaller trees, too, depending on how they can place them and plant them in and thicken that growth around the perimeter of the site. Uh, just as note on the perimeter, it's always been proposed by the applicant to expand the existing fencing around the trailer parking area. So not only will we have fencing, uh, not only will we have the trees, but there will be that fencing around the perimeter, which will be required and maintained as part of the site plan agreement. So there will be a essentially a a a sent um solid fence that people wouldn't be able to see through, and that minimizes the look. People can't see anything, but it also helps them from a security perspective. And one last thing I just wanted to point out on this slide is the dark bluish purple line that kind of meanders through is the location of around the site here, this main part of this piece here. That's the approximate footprint of the former landfill. So what you've kind of noticed is that a portion of the landfill has been developed on, and that's part of the existing site, as part of the exist, under the existing in one area for most part. That site is already developed. There's already been activities taking place. It's this la- rear portion here where they're looking at expanding into and adding the trailer parking. Um, just utilizing these lands efficiently uh within the urban fabric that are currently underutilized. Uh, these rear line, rear lands that we're adding are outside of the floodplain. Um, the blue little dash line you're seeing a ground on this drawing is the floodplain limit. So most of the rear of the site is actually gonna be outside of the floodplain versus the front part of the site, which is currently in the floodplain. So as you recall from last week's uh, a few weeks ago, the meat recommendation. Um, we've outlined and went through the provincial policy, place to grow the regional official plan and the township official plan. We acknowledge they've addressed all those issues and all those requirements and those and meet those policies. Uh, we also know that the M A M E C P, which is the ministry who oversees landfills and development on them, have also given comments that they have no objections to the proposed use. Various technical studies were done. There's a bunch of technical studies, uh archaeological planning justification, uh functional servicing, geotechnical, the D six compatibility for noise dust odor, this D four study around development on a landfill and how that and studies around that and the impacts of the proposed development, the phase one and phase two environmental works were done. And environmental impact study was done on the rear portion also on the tree preservation plan. So a lot of technical studies have been done. They were all been reviewed and approved. The township even went to that extra step on the D four study as we had it peer-reviewed. Technically, it is under the jurisdiction of the region to comment to that under the minute with the ministry. However, we, as a township, determined that we wanted a bit of extra review and had it studied uh the township's request and get the D four study re- peer-reviewed. And as a result, we got a better peer review, a better report and analysis to ensure that development could take place appropriately in that rear. And as a result, we got a better peer review, a better report and analysis to ensure that development could take place appropriately in that rear portion. For gravel parking, trailer parking only. All the agency issues have been addressed. That includes G R C A and the region. Uh as noted, the truck turning, the truck movements to and from the site are. And and as a result of this proposal are going to be minimal because we're talking that rear portion essentially only. There are very small amount of trucks that are really coming and going as a result of this proposed development. As a as a suggestion and the part of the recommendation in front of you tonight and the modified recommendation. Staff did propose some requirements around site plan that could be implemented just to make it clear what's anticipated at site plan. So. The requirement of the fence around the perimeter of the site. At one point five meters, which is about two meters out about height, I mean about uh eight meters, eight feet height. Um and that should block most of the trailer park trailers in conjunction with the trees. As well as that requirement, just to make it very clear, we're looking at the one to one. Tree replacement of native trees. So we're looking to see native trees be part of that um as a requirement, just to make sure it's clear. Uh in terms of the zoning. Um the applicant is also supposed and it's not a requirement because there's nothing technically saying that there's a part of traffic problem per se. The applicant has agreed to a holding provision across the property. That would essentially limit the uses in the front part of the property also to reduce any larger truck. Operations from taking place on site. So. They're agreeing to limit certain uses on the property that they have rights to today. Saying, no, we're not going to have them because they would be higher truck turning or higher truck operations. And you know, those they wouldn't be permitted without the lifting of a holding provision, which would need additional study. And the requirements are outlined in the zoning bio then that there be a traffic study or a bypass in place. Based on all the issues that are in front of us and all the information and all the policies have been met, all the technical studies have been reviewed and accepted and approved. Staff is then recommending the council that the council of support, the official plan and the zoning amendments as proposed and attached in the report. And in the recommendation as worded in front of you, uh outlining the changes from the. Uh open space in the rear to an M one and with the site specific provisions limiting. The rear portion to gravel parking trail for the trailers only. And some limitations then that would address the holding provision across the front of the site and the removal of the automotive salvage yard as a result of this proposed application. Uh at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Director Freeze to wrap up with a few additional items.
Thanks, Jeremy. If you can just continue sharing your slides and go to the next slide. So Jeremy already went through a number of these additional benefits, but in addition to. Meeting the technical requirements for support by the planning department. Um there's also a number of benefits that the township would receive with this application. Um the first one would be that we would remove the permission for the automotive salvage recycling yard, which would be considered a less compatible. Use and could cause more contamination on the site. Um also, as Jeremy had mentioned, there's the current zoning um for the industrially zoned portion of the property would allow a number of other uses. Which could generate more truck truck traffic than this proposed use. Um the proposal right now is limited to trailer truck trailer parking only, which adds very minimal truck traffic throughout the day. Uh this youth use also in the applicant will be able to speak more to this as well, uh does support the local business area for their trailer parking needs. And the proposal um utilizes the existing lands within the settlement area, so therefore protecting encroachment into agricultural and lands. Um also, this proposal will improve the overall site conditions, both uh in appearance by removing the dead trees and improving. The tree screening of the site and planting native trees. And it also through the development application and the site plan approval, um there will be a requirement for monitoring the methane gas beyond um. Or for another two years. Uh lastly, and an additional benefit that uh will really help the township is the conveyance of lands to the township. So there's lands to be conveyed for a water main. Um there's a portion along the southern portion of the site to be conveyed for additional lands to be added to the park along the creek. And there's also lands for a future trail opportunity connection. Uh next slide, Jeremy. So there was a number of public comments received about a number of items that I'm sure will be discussed further tonight. Um with respect to the removal of the wild area and the animal habitat, the development will remove the dead trees and the invasive species and plant new native trees. Um also, this will be at a one to one ratio. So that type of habitat will be protected or will be replanted. Uh the development of the formal gravel pit. Um or the gravel pit, uh it's formal, uh former, sorry. The former landfill to a gravel parking lot will continue to allow the methane gas to vent. And also the new owner, the owner will monitor for the next two years. Um additional information has been provided by the applicant, which indicates the proposed truck movements with only four per day and only two going south. Uh through the intersection of church and Arthur. So that kind of deals with the discussion about the uh additional truck traffic at that intersection. Um also with the limited slow truck traffic movements, there's not expected to be a lot of issues with dust or diesel fumes. And uh right now the subject lands are an overgrown former landfill. Uh they're not parkland, they're not environmental feature. So this proposal will not um be taking away any um community green space. In fact, it will actually be adding some space by the addition to the park. Um and lastly, the the development will add additional trees that will be planted along the kissing bridge trail. So that will actually enhance that trail and then also the opportunity for a future future trail connection. Next slide, please, Jeremy. Uh there was also a number of comments that were received in support of the application. Um these included the protection of farmland and not encroaching into that that agricultural farmland. Uh the replacement of the dead trees with the native new and native trees. Uh the support, uh there was support for actually additional lighting on the on the site. And there was identification that the dust and traffic would not be impactful. Um public uh comments also noted the benefit of that removal of the auto wrecking yard and the cleanup of the site with new fence and trees. Next slide, please. So just on to some some final notes, um there's very limited development uh potential for this site, given that it is a former landfill site. Um the current use of the auto salvage yard and the industrial zoning um would could potentially be less compatible development. As is without any kind of zoning or official plan amendment. Uh the provost, well, as Jeremy had mentioned, meets the technical criteria and has ministry approval for the redevelopment as this gravel parking lot. Um there's a number of public comments. However, we've received uh public comments both in support and against. And we would note that um not all comments that are or not all signatures that are on a petition are uh directly in the area um. Around this this property. Um also, I just wanted to point out there are some impacts to either a decision of refusal or a non-decision. Uh the first one being a potential appeal to the O L T. Uh this could obviously uh have a cost to the township as the township would have to retain separate planning. Uh and support for the application and technical support. Um. Also, uh potential changes in the application when it goes to the O L T. Uh this could result in less conveyance of land to the township for parkland, uh trail connections and that water main. And uh we could lose the the opportunity to get the one for one tree replacement. Um the the other potential uh impact of a refusal is that we could get a development that is an industrial opera operation that has more truck traffic. Um already permitted as of right. And a uh the last one, of course, is the potential for the continued auto salvage yard use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeze. Um thank you, Mr. Vink as well. Uh now we do have four delegations to hear from, but before we hear from the delegations, I do have some instructions to read for you. So this is to the delegations. You have a maximum of seven minutes to speak unless counsel or the clerk has set a different time. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning when you have one minute left and then again when your time is up. Once you're finished, please wait for questions of clarification from council. When there are no more questions for you, please turn off your microphone and return to your seat. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the discussion and or the meeting if you would like to. And you are also welcome to leave quietly whenever you wish. Council discussion and debate will start when all questions of clarification have finished. So our first delegation is a consultant, Mr. Hugh Handy from G S P Group. Um I think that you are joining us in person. Yes, you are.
Thank you, uh Chair Cado, uh Mayor Shance, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hugh Handy and I'm a land use planner and a vice president at G S P Group. I'm here on behalf of our client thirty nine A Holdings Limited this evening. Our client, Rob Shapiro, uh is also attending virtually as is uh Mr. Shapiro's solicitor, Tom Holinsky from Aired and Barless. Committee will be familiar uh with this uh application um and also the people that are with you again this evening. Uh Jim Walls, uh senior geoscientist with R J Burnside. And Nathan Miller, uh who is the senior terrestrial and wetland biologist from Natural Resource Solutions. I thank you again for the opportunity this evening to address you. You've had an excellent and thorough presentation from your planning staff. Uh on behalf of our uh client this evening, we're making two delegations. I'll obviously be speaking first, uh followed by uh Jim Walls uh at the end of the other delegations you'll be hearing for this evening. I will focus on land use planning aspects and Jim will focus more on environmental and traffic aspects of the project. Uh as committee will recall, uh on March seventh, they requested additional information which Mr. Vink uh and Miss Freeze uh went over. Dealing with traffic impacts and existing trees and compensation on the property. We supplied an information package on March twenty first uh that's included in your agenda package. Township staff have reviewed this information and and commented in their staff report uh and that's reflected in what's before you this evening. With your support this evening, you will be permitting in what my professional opinion is a land use planner. Is an appropriate use on the former uh landfill site and will move a longstanding salvage and recycling yard. The proposed land use will also um really create minimal traffic and we are agreeing to the holding provision as Mr. Uh Vink had talked about. Should a future more intensive land use be contemplated, then that would uh involve an undertaking of a of a traffic study uh to lift that holding provision. You can see the commitment of our client to maintaining the site and running a respectable operation. This will continue with the expansion and be further detailed as part of a site plan approval process that would follow this. Uh pending an approval of committee and council. We will be maintaining a significant uh tree cover on the site and adding trees uh on the site at a one to one ratio as also has been highlighted. Uh this also, and I think as I highlighted previously, um there is community benefits to this proposal. Uh by securing additional land for the park. Uh by giving ownership to the township for their water main uh that's on the back of the property and that serves a double purpose. Of also connecting to the kissing bridge trailway. With all of that, um you again have before you a positive staff report uh this evening. That has gone through a thorough and detailed review. I'm not aware of many applications in the province of Ontario that I'm involved with that don't go through a detailed review, but this has gone through a detailed review given. Uh all the factors that are um at play of developing uh the site. Um so with that, our client and our team would respectfully request your support this evening. Uh for uh the application. If you have any questions from a planning perspective, I'm happy to answer to answer those uh now uh with our team. If you have also any questions with respect to the current tree cover or compensation, I have with me Nathan Miller. And as I mentioned, Jim Walls is going to do a presentation at the end, which will. Um I hope uh through the other delegations be able to um either answer those questions. And that's why we split our presentation to be able to answer as many questions as we could uh for the committee this evening. So uh I thank you for your time and your consideration of the applications.
Thank you, Mr. Handy. Um are there any questions or comments from council? Hmm councillor Burgess.
Thank you through you chair delegate. Um just you guys provided a nice picture um of the view when the trees are matured. In the interim process from a visual perspective from the park and from High Street, well, there'll be pretty good coverage with that fence. And the existing trees that won't be cut down.
Uh through you, I chair to the councillor, uh yes, uh there the intent is really to. Take out uh to remove the trees in the interior of the site. And of course, uh the other tree compensation will be part of the. Uh the process moving forward and be detailed through the site plan process, but I'm happy to bring. Uh Nathan, maybe it's a good point because we haven't, uh if if you're all right, Mr. Chair, just to answer that question more fully.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So you'll notice on that diagram, we're retaining. Uh belt of trees along the bottom between the proposed development area and the park. So that that will remain and will provide quite a screen and then. And then eventually the trees that we planted will grow up and and mature, but we're not gonna. Leave it empty so that it'll you'll be able to have a clear view. It's still going to be obscured by the trees that are we're retaining. So, yeah.
Just further to that uh question around the fence, is that gonna have any sound barrier as well, or is it going to be more chain link with maybe a a felt or something to cover?
Mr. Chair, uh to answer the question, uh the final details of the fencing would be determined through uh the site plan process. Uh it is not intended to be a noise uh fence, um but uh board on board or some other kind of. Uh fence that would have some kind of screening uh potential.
And somebody's. Sorry, councillor Grant, I forgot. I saw your hand up there. Um don't want to dismiss you virtually there. So if you had a question or a comment.
Yes, thank you through you chair to uh the applicant. Um I think I read it somewhere with the the mixture of trees being planted. Some are going to be. More mature or at least larger than than just saplings. Would I was I correct in that I read that somewhere?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll ask Nathan to come back to the podium and answer the councillor's question.
Yes, uh councillor. So our plan is to provide a mixture of mature trees, what we're calling large caliper trees. So those are. Trees that have a diameter of about fifty millimeters. Um so they're they're going to be much larger, you know, taller than I am. Um but we're recommending that a mixture of about twenty five percent of the mature trees. Uh and then the remainder smaller stock. The reason we don't recommend all the larger stock is because they're harder to install. It requires a lot more heavy machinery and you're likely to damage the trees that you want to retain. Uh and the natural features. We try to do a balance, um but yeah, that's that's kind of the plan.
Alright, thank you.
Just to follow up, I don't know if you want to go too far. Thanks, Nathan. Um with respect to those trees, I'm starting to lose my train of thought. I hate when that happens. Um. You know, come to me just. We'll go to councillor Burgess. I know that he's has a comment question. Go ahead. It'll come back to me while you.
Perfect. I got two of them here. Uh not to get too nitpicky on the fence. I know Mr. Kittle already brought it up, but. The minimum height, it says one point five meters, about five feet. Is that a bit tiny for a fence? Like, should that be increased to six feet or am I just getting a little too picky here? That might be it.
Well, I I I know that you had mentioned that uh the site plan is still in development. So. Is that kind of to be determined still the the height of the fence?
Uh I guess uh through your chair to the councillor, uh it is a five like what's required in the bylaws, a minimum uh of of offense. And so that would be. Looked at through the the process. Um I think we hit part of this is. It not creating a wall necessarily. It's a balance between securing the property and and uh. You know, making it look appropriate within the natural setting, right? Yeah, I think that's the balance that I would try to strike in that.
That's good. Thank you. In fact, I have one follow up.
I remembered my question. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Um just to get on the trees. What uh I think Miss Freeze touched on this quickly, but uh what? For the site plan, if we have the one to one replacement, what is the responsibility of the applicant to maintain those? Like, if we have a drought in the first year. Where do we go from there kind of thing?
Yeah, so typically we require uh, you know, a one-year warranty period for for tree plantings. Um what we typically will try to do is we'll try to overplant. More than than we might need so that if some of them die, then you know, we're still matching that one to one. It's it's cheaper than. Coming back and and replacing stock that you don't have to. So sometimes we'll we'll plant more than we need to. Um if we can fit them on the site. So so that's uh that's kind of the plan. Um. But yeah, we usually have a a. But yeah, we usually have a one year or two year warranty period that we would follow up and check, check on the trees, make sure they're doing alright.
I see a couple of planning staff on online here. Maybe you want to jump in?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to counsel or just further follow up there. If dictated on the site plan, as we allow the development to go forward, they would then be part of the site plan and the drawing would form part of site plan. They'd be required to. Ensure that the the trees are maintained in the long term. So much as they have a two year warranty on them with the landscape architect or landscaper to install them. In perpetuity, we would expect trees to be maintained in that state that my property. So we'd be seeing that fulsome take place. So they die five years from now. They'd have to come in and start replacing those trees. So the site plan agreement would dictate that. Currently, we don't have a site plan agreement, so there is no requirements for any of those trees on the property. So they could be removed right under today's circumstances. Future, anything on the property would be governed by the site plan and held and maintained. They might be planting some of these on the future lands they convey to the township for park purposes. So after that two year maintenance, those will become our responsibility, but there's a benefit that we gain park land and hopefully they do they do grow after the two year. Usually the two year maintenance means they will survive in the longer term.
And then back to my question, it's along the same lines, the one to one ratio. Just for confirmation, that's one to one ratio of native species being replaced. That's not all the trees that are going to be taken down, dead invasive otherwise.
No, so that that counts any trees. We're we're counting trees that are invasive in that number. So there's two hundred and two trees that meet the. The qualification for requiring compensation and that includes the invasive one. So any tree that's in good health, basically. We are counting at requiring compensation.
Are there questions? I mean, okay, I have a couple of them. Any of the lands that are being conveyed to the township, would that constitute any of the old landfill? Like, would any of the old landfill lands? Okay, I'm seeing a head shaking.
Oh, Mr. Chair, please. I'll let your walls to come up to confirm that.
Jim Walls, Geoscientist, RJ Burnside. None of the lands that would be conveyed to the township include landfill. So they'll all be clean lands.
Excellent. Thank you. And I know that there was quite a bit of dialogue within the reports around this parking lot being necessary. For local businesses, I'm wondering if you have any data that supports that it's really the local businesses that would be leveraging this parking lot?
I worked on a number of these sites for Mr. Shapiro across Southern Ontario. So on this site, I don't have his his business plan and how he figured out how much he could make on the property. But all his other properties, he's been very successful with. He goes in before he purchases the land and evaluates. What the what the area is in need of and and, you know, how how his business is going to do, but he didn't share those numbers with me, but. I was involved in evaluating the property before he purchased it and he was already pre convinced. That there was a need for this type of service in Elmira.
Thank you very much. I have no doubts that there would be a need, you know, we need trucks to bring us goods. It's just a matter of whether or not these are actually trucks that are benefiting the businesses here, the way that it was kind of construed in some of those reports is there is trucks being parked. You know, throughout the township and other places, and perhaps this is the best place for some of those trucks to land. So it would just be a matter of. Kind of finding that support to to back up some of those claims that were being made in some of those reports. So, yeah, again, it's just making sure that we are supporting the local need. The last thing that I want to do is. You know, prevent the businesses from growing, including the one that we're speaking of here tonight. So that was just something that was at the forefront of my mind. So with that. If there are no other questions for the delegation, thank you very much. So the next delegation that we have is Dr. Dan Holt and Mr. Alan Marshall. You do have ten minutes, so you can take the stand.
Just for clarification, this is Mr. Marshall. He's our technical staff. We don't have a big one like you guys do. Through your chair to the council. As Johnny Mitchell's nineteen seventy hit song, so aptly put it, don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you got till it's gone? They pave paradise and put up a parking lot. That seems to be a very apt description of what's happening in Elmira, the proposed expansion of the previous salvage yard to allow for a hundred and fifteen semi trucks or fifty three on the east side. Will destroy the wild area just north of Bowlander Park, south of and adjacent to the Kissing Bridge Trail. And just west of the residential area on High Street, and it will do exactly that. The destruction of hundreds of mature trees, bushes, flowers and the home for many wild animals will be bulldozed. Covered with gravel to enable more trucks to park there. Not to mention that it'll be on top of a landfill that we talked about that actively produces methane gas. It doesn't seem to matter that over fifteen hundred people signed a petition expressing their opposition to the parking lot. Some have said that petition can be ignored since not everyone who signed it is from Elmira. I would say, okay. Not all who signed it are from Elmira. Some bring their children to the splash pad from Kitchener. I've met them. And from surrounding areas. So let's say that a hundred and fifty were not from within a thirty minute drive. There are still over thirteen hundred and fifty signatures. It would have been a lot more had we gone door to door asking people if they wanted to sign the petition. So I would contend that we represent over thirteen hundred people in our opposition to the parking lot. Briefly, let's summarize why people are against having a truck parking lot next to Bowlander Park where their children play, less than a block from residential homes. Next to a busy nature trail and on top of a landfill. Some of the objections are more diesel gas fumes, which are known to be carcinogenic. More dust, destruction of hundreds of mature trees. Let me say here that I know it's proposed that the trees that are destroyed will be replaced on a one to one basis. But it's not really one to one. It's three hundred and eighty six destroyed and two hundred and two saplings planted. And when will they be planted? And seriously, how many decades will it take to replace the mature trees with saplings? There will be more noise, more light and lower property value for those of us who live within a block of the parking lot. But who can determine any of this, will how any of this will affect the property value, the homes adjacent to the proposed parking lot? So residents should not worry about that, right? Oh, and the wildlife that currently lives in the area will just have to die. Or find another location such as the homes nearby in which to nest. Additionally, the methane gas produced by the landfill that will be covered by the gravel won't be a problem. Well, let's discuss the methane gas. The landfill, which was previously a gravel pit, was operated from approximately nineteen sixty two to nineteen seventy. Waste was deposited to a depth of about five and a half meters over an area of three point five hectares by a contractor for the town of Elmira. There are no official records of the type of waste received at that site, but that waste produces methane gas. Methane is deadly, but simply if you breathe too much, you die. If there's too much, it will and can explode. Based on a stack of reports from four Woolwich Township from Conestoga Rovers, later GHD consultants. Starting in August nineteen eighty three and going to July twenty two, nineteen sixteen. We have compiled the data into a chart showing that methane concentrations, and I think you all have the the chart, if you should, if you don't. Note, the methane gas concentrations listed on the chart you have are both in gas probes, which is the GP. And the date of the with the explosive high levels highlighted in red from March of eighty three until the most recent July of twenty twenty one. The last methane results were done in twenty one by RJ Burnside on behalf of thirty nine A Holding. The one widely accepted criteria is twenty percent LAL or lower explosive limit, representing potentially dangerous conditions, and the other is a hundred percent LAL. Or the actual concentration of methane in air that will explode if there are any sources of ignition. What is most obvious in these summaries is that the subsurface methane concentrations, despite. An alleged gas collection system operating from nineteen eighty four to twenty fifteen. Have remained at dangerously high levels and even much higher from eighty three until the present. This is in direct contradiction to claims made by our Burnside that GHD consultants have verbally advised that further methane monitoring is no longer required. In the same RJ Burnside report, it's again claimed that the methane gas system was decommissioned on behalf of the township when it was no longer required. Being decommissioned due to a lack of need is one thing, but being decommissioned to a long known and documented history of breakdowns and poor design. Exacerbated by groundwater flooding of the gas probes is entirely another. As far back as nineteen eighty six, Conestoga Rovers CRA. On behalf of Woolwich Township expressed concerns that the gas collection was not working. Twenty five years ago, CRA also recommended abandoning the existing gas collection system due to its poor performance. Not due to a lack of dangerous methane being present. In fact, GHD on September fourteenth, twenty seventeen sent a letter to Woolwich Council. In direct response to Mr. Marshall's delegation to council, in which GHD advised that a new passive gas collection system was planned. Therefore, current claims of a decommissioned gas system, collection system, while partially true. We believe are missing the intention of the provincial regulation, which denies development of any kind. Upon former landfills that require methane gas controls. The MOE CP pamphlet D four land use on or near landfills and dumps states on page seven, I quote. Five point two point two non operating sites where technical controls for leachate and or leachate and gas are required. Surrounding a fill area, no use may take place within thirty meters of its perimeter. The distance may be reduced to twenty meters in cases where only gas controls are necessary, end quote. Further to this, our claims by RJ Burnside that the proposed extension of the parking lot eastward over the top of the fill area. Quote, in the same fashion as the existing parking lot should not cause any environmental or human health impact issues, end quote. Please look at the size of the methane concentrations on the west end of the landfill. And this is on the chart that you should have. Seventy five percent, seventy three percent, twenty two percent, eighteen percent, sixty one point nine percent, seventy eight, three point eight percent. And remember, the explosive level is recognized at five point five percent. This area has long been covered with gravel compared to the east side, which is where the proposed parking lot is to be located. It has not been covered with, it has not been covered with gravel, but rather with trees and various plants. Methane concentrations are consistently higher on the west end of the landfill covered in gravel than in the east end. Anything on top of the landfill, possibly snow, topsoil or even gravel. Further reduces the ability of the methane to vent naturally at the surface, thus increasing horizontal migration toward homes, factories. Popular nature paths and playgrounds. As Mr. David Brenneman, Chief Administrative Officer of Woolwich Township, stated in a meeting on January the tenth, twenty twenty three. Quote, residents have a right to enjoy their property, end quote. I couldn't agree more with Mr. Brenneman. Over fifteen hundred people signed that petition, which was delivered to the council stating that they opposed the addition of a heavy truck parking lot next to Bowlander Park. Where children and adult citizens go to have fun, just enjoy the outdoors as well as homeowners who want to enjoy their property, as Mr. Brenneman states. Please register your opposition to this proposed destruction of a natural part of Elmira. And a proposed development on top of a source of methane gas, which is forbidden by the MOE CP. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Are there any questions for the delegation?
We have time. I think we have some more time.
You have some time.
You'd like to speak?
I would like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Certainly.
But I don't want to interrupt if there's a question pending.
I'm not seeing any right now.
Okay, thank you. Two items that Dr. Holt made very clear. And which I believe have been overlooked. Throughout the Burnside reports and throughout the Woolwich planning reports. That is the extent of methane for the last forty years. That has not been reduced despite an alleged. Gas collection, methane gas collection system. From nineteen eighty four until twenty fifteen. The reality is, as Dr. Holt mentioned. It was recommended twenty five years ago by the consultants to the township to abandon it. It was not working. Part of the problem is the high water table flooding the gas probes. There are many other concerns, including. Trucks on the site allegedly probably running over gas probes. If you're now about to expand to the east. With tractor trailers, believe me, if a little pickup truck. Or or a front end loader towing a car is knocking over gas probes. I think you can imagine whether it's fifty three or a hundred and fifteen tractor trailers. Backing up forwards and backwards are going to be just destroying any gas probes. So. The the whole point is this, the methane is there. It hasn't been decreased despite some efforts. Despite taxpayers' money going towards approximately ten or eleven. Fairly serious consulting reports. There's there's another point that I wanted to mention because I think. Sort of the backup batter behind me for Burnside may may want to dispute this. There have been claims that the methane gas on the west side at GP two fifteen is not landfill related. That is nonsense. Methane gas is produced by the anaerobic decomposition of organic matter, organic matter being foodstuffs. Methane gas cannot be produced by fuels or wrecked cars. The methane in the west side of that site is higher concentrations generally than the east. The east is still above the lower explosive limit and a spark will ignite it. But the fact is, the the point I'm raising here is that the west side, as again Dr. Holt mentioned, is covered in gravel. It has been for years, and that, folks, is where the highest concentrations of methane are. The gravel. And vehicles have reduced the ability of the methane to vent naturally vertically upwards. Hence, it goes horizontally. If you cover the east side with gravel, whether it's a foot or a meter or two meters. And compact it to hold tractor trailers, you are holding methane in. And moving it horizontally instead of vertically. This will make your problems worse. And I'll I'll end on that note because I presume that second beat meant I was out of time. I will end on that note. The methane. I believe is the huge issue. I take no. Arguments or limited arguments with trees and landscaping. The methane has not been addressed and should be addressed first before any development takes place on that site. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marshall, Dr. Holt. Are there any other questions from council to the delegations? Counselor Burgess?
Thank you, Dr. Holt and Mr. Marshall for bringing that to our attention. I'm just, I guess, reaching out to staff, kind of get their comments on it if I could. I know Miss Freeze and Mr. Vink commented that the ministry has approved. This proposal and are okay with things. So just kind of, yeah, wondering your thoughts and. Their information and ongoing monitoring of methane.
Yeah, so you know, we are in the middle of delegations. I know that we have another two delegations to hear from. You know, perhaps we just hold questions for staff until the end of the delegations. That's fair.
Is there any chance that Mr. Burgess would like one of us to answer that question?
Mr. Burgess, Counselor Burgess?
You you suggested the ministry have given their approval. Would you like a response on that?
Just in the report that they were discussing right now. On the development there is just what I was referring to.
Yes. If I may. The ministry have also. Given approval for forty years in grassy narrows not to clean up mercury. The very same ministry here in Elmira. For forty years or more have given approval not to clean up the downstream Canagigig Creek with all due respect. I think many of your local citizens have a better handle. On local issues than the Ontario Ministry of Environment. We may not have their budget, but I'll I'll just make that comment. I do. I do not get a warm fuzzy feeling when I'm told the ministry have said it's okay. That's based on experience.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any other questions? CEO Brenneman?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify something. Dr. Dan, I appreciate you quoting me. But for the record, I just wanted to note that it was. Not related to this particular file. It was related to a a meeting that the township. Facilitates with a local industry, community members and the ministry regarding older concerns and. At the time, what were we speaking to at the beginning of the meeting was. That the ongoing purpose of these meetings is to try and strike a balance. That balance between, i.e. The right of property owners to enjoy their property, but also the right of businesses to be able to thrive and prosper. So as a township, we're always trying to balance. Both of those things in the public service. Is support for residents and what that looks like and support for businesses. So just want to make sure it's understood. Yes, I may. So just want to make sure it's understood, yes, I made that comment, but it was part of a larger comment as, as part of that meeting.
Thank you for that, Mr. Brenneman, and I suppose, you know, a lot of those statements kind of would apply to the, the conversation that we're having here today. So thanks for that, Dr. Holt. I see that you would like to address the over and then.
I would just like to respond that it seems to me that that, that quote, I was there, I heard the quote, and I know what he's talking to referring to in regards to the, the meeting that it was about, the, the odors that come from the, the pet food plant. And it seems to me that, that, that statement at that time, under those circumstances, is very appropriate to these circumstances and this situation as well. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, and it's a fair point, and it's about striking that balance. And I think that that's what we're here to really have a conversation about is how can we find that, that balance that really respects property owners as well as the businesses in our community? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you both very much for your delegation. You can take your seats and stick around, or you're free to leave anytime you wish. All right, so the next delegation will be Ed Northcott. He will be joining us virtually. Mr. Northcott, are you with us?
I'm here. All right, I'm coming through. Excellent. All right, councillors of Woolwich Township, thank you for taking the time to review this matter. I'll try and keep this brief, though I believe this to be an extremely important decision. I feel that the facts speak for themselves that the common good of the people and the town is served best by keeping the zoning regulations as they are and preserving the woods behind Bowland Park. The communities of our township still bear the character of their origins. We've got good, hardworking people who created friendly, pretty towns that we've been fortunate enough to inherit. Pretty enough, in fact, that we can count tourism among the many industries that keep the township prosperous. The St. Jacobs Farmers Market, the Elmira Maple Syrup Festival, and even the splash pad at Bowland Park. These act as a draw for people from nearby regions to come and visit, bolstering local businesses in the process. Industrial development matters as well, and we've seen that grow in the region over the years. May even be that there is a critical need for more parking space for transport trucks. But if there is not, then there would be no merit to this proposal. So I'm working from the presumption that this fills a need. And if it does, if there is indeed a serious need for more parking spaces for transport trucks in this area, then there are already significant amounts of land designated for industrial use. There's no need for the land behind Bowland Park to be put to this use. There is, however, potential harm to the township should this be allowed. Even putting aside the possible environmental impact and issues arising from methane, let's look at the effects of the here and now. We have a petition of over fifteen hundred signatures stating themselves in opposition to this change. Now, true, a number of these signatures are from outside of our town. There are many people from surrounding areas like Waterloo, Guelph and Kitchener who signed on. This is worth noting. If you go to Bowland Park in the summer months, it won't just be Elmira residents that you find there. The splash pad at Bowland Park and its subsequent upkeep costs are a worthwhile investment. It not only provides a place for families of our own town to come together and enjoy the park, but people from outlying communities as well. The rather ambitious goal in building the splash pad was to create a world-class amenity in our township. Given how busy it is during the summer months, there's no denying how successful the implementation of this park splash pad has been. It's worth thinking about how the success of Bowland Park has helped improve the quality of life in Elmira and the potential customers that it brings to our downtown businesses before we allow it to be affected by outside interests. Would it not be worth nurturing this resource and improving the lives of many rather than damaging the impacted offers for the sake of a parking lot that could be put elsewhere if there is indeed a desperate need for it? Homeowners along George Street and the far end of High Street will have their property values affected by this, along with the quality of their day-to-day lives. From the appearance of the presented plan for the tree battery and the proposed height of the fence, this parking lot will be visible from the residential area rather than the woodland that they now see. Then, of course, there's the considerable question of traffic. Elmira already struggles with this problem despite Arthur Street being the region's responsibility because of its status as a regional road. There's an impending study that will be looking at the feasibility of creating a bypass that traffic is routed around Elmira rather than through it, along with widening certain highways and a portion of Arthur Street leading into Elmira. Is it wise then to approve a project that only encourages further growth of the current problem? On streets that are already too congested for their design, do we really want to add transport trucks to that tally? The claim is that will only create a minor increase in truck traffic through our downtown core, but it is a documented fact that we struggle with what we already have. Any addition to that is problematic. Struggle with keeping that area safe. We've seen a number of incidents around Church and Arthur in recent years. What will this do to the flow of traffic, to pedestrian safety? What will be the impact on the quality of our downtown area and the businesses that call it home? How will it impact the local Mennonite population? They are intrinsic to the character of our township and help build it to the fine place that it is. Should we not be striving to protect the people who have given so much and been our neighbors for so long rather than approving measures that will only endanger them or continue to drive them out? Allowing this zoning change will allow a small number of people some measure of profit, it's true. However, that profit potentially draws a significant cost from the community itself on our businesses, on our quality of life, on the value of our homes and on the safety of our citizens. Enriching the few at the cost of the many is not a decision that is justifiable through economics, sense of efficiency, and certainly not ethically. It is a mistake that will weigh on the community and even worse, should future members of the council wish to repair the damage, it will take generations if it can be fixed at all. This is not hyperbole. Years ago, the city of Kitchener made a similar mistake and has spent decades since trying to repair the damage to their downtown core. Time and again, the consultants and studies that they've commissioned to try and revitalize their downtown have come to the same conclusion. Sacrificing a community asset in the form of the original city hall and the green space around it in exchange for the profit of a few businessmen essentially strangled the prosperity of the area. Let's not repeat their mistake. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Northcott. Are there any questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Northcott. You may mute your microphone and turn off your camera now. All right, that brings us to the final delegation of the night, Mr. Jim Walls with RJ Burnside.
I'm sorry. Right, and how do I move it? Or within arrows? Okay. A good evening. I'm Jim Walls of RJ Burnside. I'm a geoscientist and vice president of environment. I've been working on this project for, since its inception, since the owner was first interested in acquiring the property. Next slide, please. It's a former landfill site. We've heard that described tonight. And in my twenty-five years of doing this work, it's the first time I've ever heard anyone describe a former landfill site as paradise, but there seems to be some opinion that that's what it is. There's a lot of discussion about the trees and the concern for the trees on the landfill site. The landfill site has a cap on top of it that has to be protected by mandate from the ministry of how the site was closed. It can't have large trees with large roots penetrating and damaging the cap. So all this discussion about protecting the trees and the woodlands, really, I've been telling my owner since we first acquired it that we have to protect the cap. Otherwise, we could end up in some problems with the ministry. That doesn't mean we have to devastate the whole thing, but you can't have large mature trees growing on the landfill footprint itself because of the nature of the cap. So we've studied the, the site quite extensively. The D four study that's been described is a ministry prescribed process on how to evaluate methane on landfills. It has a clay cap that must be maintained, and we've discovered no environmental impacts off-site. And we evaluated that before this owner purchased the property to make sure that he wasn't going to end up with any liabilities. So we have no environmental concerns. Next slide, please. That's the former foot, the footprint of the former landfill, as you've seen tonight. A lot of, for several decades, the west side of the site has been operating as a scrapyard, as truck and trailer parking without any incident. And it's the east side of the site, the dark gray area that we wish to expand into in exactly the same fashion. Next slide, please. Counselor, last time while we're here, mentioned something about the highest and best use of a former landfill. The Ministry of Environment is the primary regulatory agency. They've approved this. Land use on landfills is very restricted. Under Oreg one fifty-three oh four, the site cannot be used for parkland. It cannot be used for residential or other sensitive purposes. They encourage industrial use to get the highest and best use of these, of these lands. So rather than use farmland or other industrial lands that could be developed into warehouses or other purposes, lands that have very limited use, you try and use them for the best possible use. Next slide, please. So using a former landfill for truck and trailer parking is the ideal use. The former landfill used as a scrapyard and now used for parking has had no issues. Areas next to the former landfill to the east, west and south that have not been impacted by the landfill will be conveyed to the township for future use as parkland. So there are a lot of discussions tonight about protecting the parkland. This proposal is going to increase the size of Bowland Park by sixteen percent, approximately two acres. That's something that should be lauded. Next slide, please. There are the lands that are going to be expanded. The lands outlined in orange to the west, to the south, and the trail lands to the east connecting Bowland Park to Kissing Bridge Trail. The discussion about what we're doing for the neighborhood and the families and everything, adding trails to connect from Kissing Bridge to Bowland Park keeps people off streets in order to access the park. Adding the parkland on the west side along the trees allows people to come straight off of Arthur Street and get to the park without going around on streets. Kids on bicycles, people walking, this adds a benefit to the pedestrian traffic in the community. The lands in purple will be retained, but they are part of the tree screen. So between the lands being conveyed to the municipality and the tree screen area south of the blue swim pond area for drainage will maintain an effective tree screen. These trees will be still there during construction. There will be some changes, but the visual will remain throughout this process. Of course, the lands that are being conveyed to the township, the township can do what they want. There's no intention of doing anything before they're conveyed, so that tree screen will remain. Next slide, please. All agencies with jurisdiction have reviewed the proposal and have no outstanding issues. Region of Waterloo, Grand River Conservation Authority, the Conservation Authority was very pleased to find that the lands along the creek would be conveyed to a public body like the municipality, to the township. They like to see all that creek lands in public ownership rather than private ownership, so they were tickled about this idea. Ministry of Environment has reviewed all the works, our D four, the methane gas ESA studies. The methane gas approval includes two years of monitoring. So during the development of the parking lot, methane gas will be monitored ongoing for two years. The reports will be submitted to the municipality, to the region and to the ministry for comment. If action is needed, further monitoring is needed, that will continue. If things are so bad that parking shouldn't be continued, that will be, that will be an option as well. We don't expect it, but that is open. We deliver the reports with our conclusions and recommendations. Will be public, it will be open to the public. Technical and planning staff have already reviewed it. GHD did a peer review of our D four, had a number of comments. We revised it, changed some plans, gave them some more data and, and the, and then they concurred with our findings. Next slide, please. The environmental impacts of the landfill have been one of the concerns of the public. So we've studied it extensively. There's no issues of contamination, methane, gas, et cetera, going offsite. MECP has approved it and monitoring is to continue. Impacts to the park, well, there's going to be an impact. It's going to be increased by sixteen percent, approximately two acres. Tree screen will remain and enhanced. Traffic, approval of the scrapyard, removal of the scrapyard approval reduces traffic volume. So the kind of land use that's going to happen from now on will be less traffic intense of what's happened in the past and is currently approved. Next slide, please. We've seen that. Next slide, please. Public comments, traffic movements, we've discussed that we're only expecting a few minutes movements a day. I've worked on several sites for this owner and most of the truck trailers sit there for weeks to months and don't move very much. There's no warehousing here. There's no storage. There's no unloading and loading. These are just simply trailer storage for weeks to months to service local businesses that can't store them on site. Next slide, please. This is the traffic patterns coming out. There's all kinds of different ways they can leave the site. The worst case, of course, is through the downtown, which will be limited. That's it. I think I've covered those.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walls. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Grant?
Thank you. Through you to the, and I was just wondering if you could discuss a little bit the importance of the clay cap in the former landfill and how the gravel parking lot would either affect it positively or negatively.
It's no, no impact at all. The cap is approximately half meter thick and putting gravel on top of it doesn't affect it. In fact, that's a requirement of the ministry that you do not impact and you must maintain the cap.
And then, sorry, could you just clarify like the importance behind the cap for like a landfill?
It isolates the waste from surface users, so you don't get animals or humans or rainfall on the site. It tends to, the cap is designed to shed the rainfall off and not percolate through the, through the waste and generate leachate.
Okay, thank you.
If I can follow up to that briefly. Wrote it down somewhere. Here it is. The protective cap, I know that there has been some discussion around some mature trees that may exist there. Do we know if they've done any damage to that cap as it exists? And if so, is there any remediation planned or, or are you going to assess whether or not there has been damage? And if so, kind of what are the next steps then?
Once the trees get really mature, like thirty years old, the, the roots extend down in the cap. When they're a little younger, they, they don't penetrate too far. They tend to go out, which means that they often die off, as we've seen. And they often are subject to wind, wind damage because the cap is a, a clay material. And if the roots don't go down deep, then they can fall over easy. So when we prepare the parking lot, we will be stripping the trees off and repairing any parts of the cap that are damaged. And we end up, we produce a landfill cap condition report before we put the gravel on top.
Thank you. Mayor Shans?
Yeah, thank you. Can you speak to the concerns about methane?
Sure. Methane is also called marsh gas. So if you've ever been a swamp or thrown your boat overboard in a swampy area and you've seen all that bubbling that comes out of the water, that's methane. So I'm not mitigating that methane can be dangerous. It will, it will catch fire and it can be dangerous. In this case, the methane that we've tested and the results that have been discussed here tonight are the methane in the soil or waste spaces below the cap that are held and trained there. So we've sampled for methane at surface and found absolutely nothing. It's not coming up through the cap in any quantity that we can detect at surface. So the D four study, the way the ministry designs it, is we have to evaluate worst case. So we go right in the middle of the worst parts of the waste that is decomposing, just like marsh organics decompose and produce methane. Now, over time, some discussion here was talked about how the methane gas interceptor system was in place twenty years ago. The ministry's rule of thumb that after twenty-five years, most of the ability of waste to generate methane in, in a decomposition process has waned. So the methane curve of generation and tail off is about twenty-five years. And this is over thirty years. So yes, methane is still being produced because there's still organics in the ground, but at very low rate and below the cap. And that is the worst case. So we use that to model how far out it can go, what would happen at surface. And as I mentioned, when we put the parking lot in as proposed, we will be monitoring that quarterly for two years, mostly in the parking lot gravel and the shallow surface to see what is actually making it to the surface, which could be maybe detectable at the surface level. One of the reasons why there are no buildings, no on-ground storage, only truck and trailer parking is there's a lot of space between the surface and any vessel or place where methane could build up. Is there's a lot of space between the surface and any uh vessel or place where methane could build up. So that's why this type of use on a former landfill is approved by the ministry.
Just one more question if I may, um. Are the trucks that are going to be stored here, I, I, I would imagine they're going to be empty. I know that we had heard concerns about. Uh storing transport trailers on a, a clay cap and if that could potentially do some damage. Um, generally speaking, are these going to be empty trailers? Are there any weight restrictions to the storage of this type of thing here?
The uh, the cap and the gravel on top of the cap has to be geotechnically designed to support the weight. And it will have to be designed to the same uh standards as if you were riding, driving on a gravel road. Because the last thing uh the owner wants is his trailers, if they happen to contain materials, which they could. They could be empty or, or contain materials. Obviously not materials that could freeze. There's no um liquids or anything that are stored on a site like that. There are restrictions on what you could store. Um, but it has to be designed in a way they don't sink out of sight. Because the next thing you know, your customers are complaining that their trailers are all muddy and sinking into the mud. So they have to be accessible all year round and the parking lot has to be compacted sufficiently to withstand that.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, uh thank you very much, Mr. Walls for your delegation. Um, free to stay if you wish. Uh, take your seat and. Microphone is muted. I think we're good. Uh, all right. So are there any other questions from council uh or comments for staff? Uh, Councilor Grant.
Thank you through you, Chair. I'd like to request a recorded vote for when we vote on this.
Noted, thanks. Seeing no further questions. Um, is there anyone willing to move the recommendation that we have in the report? I know that there are several within there. Do we need a recap of what those recommendations are? We have a mover. Can I get a second or? Council Grant is a second or any other discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, here I am just, okay. Burke Smith.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, as uh requested by Council Grant, I'll call a recorded vote uh for this uh, this motion. Um, I will call in a random order as uh dictated by our procedural bylaw and the motion is uh as um. Uh, printed on the agenda for you this evening. So are there any questions about the recommendation or the motion in front of you? Uh, all right, uh, starting with uh Counsel Burgess.
In favor.
Counselor Grant.
In favor.
Counselor Swint.
In favor.
Mayor Shance.
In favor.
Uh, Chair um, Kado.
In favor.
Uh, that's carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you again to the delegations. Thank you to staff. Thanks to council through that. Um. We are moving on to unfinished business, which we do not have any. Of, so that brings us forward to consent items. So there are a number of consent items uh on there uh as a whole. Does anyone on council want to remove any of those items for further discussion? Seeing no, is there anyone willing to move a recommendation? Counselor Burgess, uh, seconded by Mayor Shance. Um, all of those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, that brings us to. Wow, look at us go. Um, so there is one item pulled from the agenda package. Um. And this was me that asked for this to be pulled. Um, so this. Is uh the City of Kitchener Resolution to Request a Review of Rental Housing Tendency Displacement Bylaws. And I had just kind of brought this up because I, I didn't want to miss an opportunity to um commend the work the Kitchener is doing on this resolution. Uh, I know that you've all taken some time to read some of the background there. Um, but it has to do with people who are displaced. Uh, we're hearing a lot of intensification. So with intensification, we have gentrification. With gentrification, we have displacement largely of, of the lower income um rental units. Uh, so I can respect what Kitchener is doing and, and trying to make sure that there's place for people to land if they do find themselves displaced. Um, so there are some resolutions contained within there that I, I would like to highlight. Namely, the second one, and I probably should have had this in front of me. Would you look at that? Skip right to it. Does that ever happen? Um. So therefore be it resolved, the staff directed to review the rental replacement bylaws found elsewhere in Ontario and determine its benefits and applicability in Kitchener. Uh, be it further resolved, the staff be directed to work with community stakeholders and make recommendations and deliver on tools and best practices that could be implemented immediately. Tools that may require additional development, possibly as part of Kitchener's uh official plan. And then suggested advocacy for other governments who may support this. And I think that that language is just something that uh. I, I think that we could seek to emulate as we move forward in some of our planning processes. We've heard about several of them today. Um, the official plan, our strategic plan. And I think that I would like um to provide some direction to staff to take this into account when they're going through some of these uh matters. And not necessarily just rental replacements. I know that there has been a lot of work being done across the region, you know, not just in Woolwich. But across the region are on affordable housing initiatives. Um, you know, we heard. In council, one of the great initiatives that we're doing in this township as well. So I saw this as an opportunity to, to continue to build on a lot of the good momentum that we're seeing here. Not just in Woolwich, but across the region as well. Um, so that's the reason that I'd asked for this to be pulled as far as context. And I suppose what I would be looking for from council is just support that we would ask staff to take this back. Engage with Kitchener, at least keep up to speed with what they're doing with respect to the rental replacement. And to see if there's anything that we can do to support that initiative in Kitchener or if there's anything that we can take as lessons learned. Uh, and bring back here to Woolwich. Um, so with that, I'll open it up to see if there's any other discussion on this. For our chance.
Yeah, thank.
Sorry, Mayor Shance.
My. It's okay, you know, at the, at the region, I'm a counselor. It just sort of went right over me. It's fine. Sandy would even work. Um. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think there's some uh things to be considered in here and, and Woolwich as well. We don't have a lot of um property here that we own, and so I would just put it out to council um. As we're going through strategic planning, is that something that we want to change? A number of years ago, when I sat on council in the early two thousands, we sort of started divesting all of our holdings. And so uh that would be a strategic question that, that we might want to address. Is it time that we look at? Purchasing property so that we can direct exactly what happens on it. Um, just something to think about as we go through the next year.
Thank you for that. Um, so again, if there is consent, I suppose, from council to provide that direction. I don't know if you need anything formal or if you just need direction to. Reach out to Kitchener to see how they're making. I don't know that we want to, you know. Move forward with the resolution of our own to partner because I just don't think that we would have the same. Level of issue here. I'm not saying that we did never exist, um, but I recognize an urban center like Kitchener is going to have a lot of different um. Housing options as compared to a place like Woolwich. Counselor, did it again. Mayor Shance.
Um, I wonder if uh Mr. Brenneman would like to speak to the housing issue and how it applies here. Um, he sits on a number of committees that, that looks at housing across the townships.
Yeah, I think I, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, to, to the mayor's question. Um, I think the best context I can, I can raise here is, um, you know, uh, Chair Kado has noted that. Uh, he would like council support for direction to staff to um, maybe not partner, but um. Be aware, stay connected to Kitchener, um, utilize the fact that there are larger um urban municipality with the staffing. Stay connected on the issues, see if there is learning. Um, that's exactly what's happening now with um both myself and Deanne sits on a subcommittee, looking at the incentive side of things. Um, the group is called the Region Housing and Homelessness uh Committee. Uh, and basically the idea is the region, the three cities and the four townships all have representatives on. And again, trying to make sure we're aware of best practices, what each other's doing with respect to. Um, moving the dial on affordable housing developments, um, you know, making land available. Just like what we've done here uh with the former Quanis House lands. Um, and also, um, you know. You know, um, it's not as rampant an issue, knock on wood, here for us, but it has been indicative in the past, uh, an issue. Of homelessness, right? And so it makes sense for us to stay connected. To these sorts of initiatives and the broader regional housing and homelessness, because we learn the best practices. And we leverage the resources that the larger centers have, that we don't have the expertise in-house, especially at the region. Where they have a whole housing section, obviously as the service manager on behalf of, of, of all of the region.
Counsel Irshman.
Just following up on that, um, I guess I. My impression was that's something that's a township we were doing okay job with in terms of the Quan house project. Um, I believe the United Church Development. Have some lower income type housing in it. So I. I'm happy there's projects underway and I hesitate for us to get. I guess involved in too many things because we've got limited resources as we found out through January and the first week of February. But having said that, I'd like to approach of watching Kitchener and learning from them because I'm not above stealing ideas and best practices.
All right, thanks folks. Um. So I suppose we can probably move from that. You're okay with that?
Uh, yes, through uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I think, I think saw some nods and some support for uh. Learning and watching uh as Mr. Brenneman and as the resolution and. And that spoke to, so unless there's any objections, we can take that as direction from council tonight.
All right, thank you very much. So uh, that brings us to staff reports and memos. Um, so I see that we have a couple on the docket here. The first one, the Eastside Land Sanitary Lift Pump Station, that's IS oh three dash twenty twenty three. Uh, and it is a consultant award, so Director Pupay.
Thank you, Chair Kado, and through you to members of council. What we have before you here is report uh with consultant selection for an important project. For uh the broader servicing of the Eastside Lands in Bresla. Um, this report is uh, we're seeking council's endorsement for. Um, the selection of associated engineering at a total cost of four hundred and forty eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, six cents. Um, we're also seeking authorization for staff to negotiate with landowners for the purposes of facilitating. Uh, purchase, uh land purchases for the preferred location of the sanitary uh lift slash pump station. Um, the intent of the EA as, as was identified in the report, a lot of work has gone in this. The EA now is zeroing in. On the location, the preferred location for the lift slash pump station uh in the vicinity of what we're seeing to be Kasuth and Fountain area. And that is illustrated in the figure plan. Um, I think it's important to note that this is uh, this is really. Uh, an incredibly important um servicing piece for the township. Um, really, there are two servicing outlets, uh wastewater outlets in Bresla. One goes to Victoria North Sanitary Pumping Station and the second will be funneled um to, to this lift slash pump station. Which ultimately makes its way uh through Cambridge uh in the interim and long term will see um wastewater flows directed to. Uh, the Kitchener Wastewater Treatment Plant via a pipe bridge across the Grand River. Um. I think it's important to note that uh this was vetted through the council endorsed uh evaluation process. And that uh this is in keeping with the uh, the township's procurement policy. As you will note, under the financial impacts, it does come in over budget. Um, that's unfortunate. Um, when we uh, when we do the uh, we looked at the numbers there, this is funded uh fifty percent from development charges. This is a great example of. Development needing to pay for development. This is not a uh, a general tax levy. Um, increase in any way, shape or form, it is development charges. There is sufficient uh funds in the reserve account to cover the overage. And the other fifty percent is being covered by the one in the regional airport as uh they have servicing needs um for their lands as well. Um, and I think with that, uh, we have Ryan Tucker here as well in attendance uh to answer any questions that council may have, but uh just turn it over to council.
Thank you, Director Pupay. Are there any questions or comments from council? No, seeing none, there is a recommendation. Is anyone willing to move that recommendation? Counselor Grant, seconded by Mayor Shance. Um. I know I did it right that uh, any further discussion? I'm not sure if I'm supposed to ask that or not. Uh, all those in favor? All right, that's Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the second report, R zero two dash twenty twenty three turf maintenance services for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Uh, Director Vandenhoff, Acting Director Vanderhoff, um, you're up.
Perfect. Through you, uh, Chair Kado to council. So staff had before you an award recommendation this evening for turf maintenance services for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So I'll note. The report provided today through the revised agenda does have a slight amendment from what was previously circulated. Um, just with the subtraction of reference to the location of bidders under the evaluation section. So I just want council to be aware of that amendment, that slight amendment. Uh, so to provide some background for council, the township has traditionally contracted at the majority of our turf maintenance services for parkland, open space, cemeteries. Facilities, boulevards, cul-de-sac, um cul-de-sacs with a few minor exceptions like some parks that are rec associations had previously cut. Over the past four years, the township has gradually assumed some of these properties uh at approximately fifty acres in twenty twenty two. For twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, we're looking to keep the split uh status quo. Um, we'll focus primarily on sports fields just to ensure that we're providing uh the required service levels for our user, user groups at those facilities. Additionally, the township has contracted out turf maintenance services in Westmont Rose to the residents association. Um, over the last four years and that's worked out as a, as a wonderful partnership with them. The uh tender um that was issued uh this year had the properties divided into two different groupings. So one for Almyra and Floridale. At sixty two acres and then the remaining township, um, we call it the Saint Jacobs Group at fifty six point two nine acres. Following closing of the tender, uh staff did receive a competitive fourteen bids, which was great to see. Um, we looked at both bid submissions, proof of abilities, as well as the equipment inventories that were submitted by each of the contractors to make sure. Like that the capacity is there for them to take on the acreage that we need to maintain. Uh, based on the staff are recommending the Almyra Properties Group be awarded to LP Landscaping Plus. Um, and the Saint Jacobs Property be awarded to Duright Landscaping. And then finally, staff have a uh request of council as well to for authorization to negotiate the removal of one point two acres. From the Saint Jacobs grouping Riverside, uh and that's located at Riverside Meadows. Uh, so the soccer pitch down in Saint Jacobs. Um, off the Health Valley Trail there, we would like to bring that in-house to, to do that ourselves. Um. Yeah, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Active Directing Vanderhoff. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Swint.
Um, it's great to see a number of bids, as you mentioned. I know I was sort of struck by the large range in the bids that came in. Can you comment, is that, I guess, typical? What you see in this bid process? And if not, is there a way we could be? I guess more specific to help the bidders be more precise in their bids, or do you think this is just a normal range?
Yeah, through you, Counselor Kado to uh, uh Counselor Swint. So last time we went into tender with this contract was in uh two thousand nineteen and we received a total of four bids. Um, however, at that time, we did not, we were not utilizing the bids and tender software that we are utilizing now. So I think that there's a lot more eyes uh on the, on the work um in twenty twenty three compared to twenty nineteen. We did see quite the range in twenty nineteen as well, too. Um. But I, I, I think as a, as a staff, uh, we were satisfied that the, you know, lower. The lower kind of half or three quarters of the bids received were, you know, kind of incrementally um. Closer than that, than the, the upper quarter, so, yeah. I don't know if that answers your questions or not, but.
That helps, thank you.
Uh, the decision to remove the one point two acres and do that in-house, is that going to. Realize some sort of cost savings? Um, or can you kind of provide some context into that decision?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we'll try to do as uh, what staff will try and do is negotiate the removal of one point two at the. Yeah, C U P A or the cost per acre. CUPA or the cost per acre for those properties. So we are recommending an award to a Durite for St. Jacobs at a cost per acre of one thousand ninety eight dollars. So it'll approximately be a reduction of twelve hundred dollars from the contract. Hopefully, if the bidder is going to accept that cost per acre, we realize that we are removing a a significant portion of land from the contractor, looking to remove it from the contract as well, too. So we just like a little bit of flexibility there because you know, obviously, our our contractors see the most value in larger swaths of parkland versus a boulevard here and there, kind of littered throughout the township, so. And the reasoning is really, truthfully, it was it was not a property that we had intended to include. We wanted to bring that that soccer pitch in house, but that was included in the tender accident. So we're just looking to track that and hopefully bring that back in house.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, staff? Seeing none, there is a recommendation here. I think, getting there, yes. Is there anyone to have moved the recommendation that's put forth? Counselor Burgess, seconded by Counselor Grants. All of those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Other business. Are there any council reports or updates? Is there any discussion on the outstanding activities list? There is no, sorry, Counselor Grant?
Sorry, I was trying to get my hand raised, but it wasn't. So I used my real one. Um, thank you. Through you, Chair, to maybe staff Vanderhoff. I was just wondering if we could get maybe an update on the Bresla Library.
Through you, Chair Cado to Counselor Grant. I don't have too much of an update. I don't think since last time, I think that was just a few meetings ago now, but staff are working with the region currently. They are, I believe, finalizing the public consultation piece. And that is going to, is going to be coming to to SMT next week, just for a quick glance at that. I can chat with staff as well, too, if that's something that a a counselor or council would be interested in in having a look at as well, too. That's something that we can share through the process.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, just recycling back, making sure that there are no discussions on the outstanding activities list. I know that that had to do with council reporter updates. So seeing none? That brings us to the end of the meeting. Is there anyone willing to move or to second an adjournment? Or do you want to sit here and listen to me for a lot longer tonight? Because I I'm good to go. No. Can I get a mover? All right. Thank you, Counselor Swint. Secondary, Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you very much. So in closing, council would like to thank all that participated tonight, both in presentations and delegations and those of you who turned into our meeting tonight on the YouTube live stream. I'm just going to remind council to please stay connected until we receive confirmation that the live stream has stopped. Good night, everyone.